All right, we are live. Good evening and we are moving out of executive session into open session for our Tuesday, April 4th, School Committee meeting. And I would welcome you to join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We did run a little bit over in our executive session, so we're starting about 10 minutes late, 7:10 exactly. First on our agenda is public comment. Is there anyone here for public comment? Please state your name and address.
My name is Helen Picard. I live at 447 Waverly Road. And I just want to welcome and thank the new School Committee members. Congratulate them on a successful campaign and wish them best of luck in their service to North Andover.
Thank you. Other public comment? And so that leads us into recognition and Ms. Picard stole my thunder. So I just wanted to welcome both Ms. Koenig and Mr. Brown. You both have really unique experiences and expertise and we look forward to working with you. So welcome to the board.
Likewise, thank you.
Okay, let's move right into consent agenda. So the donation from the Striders, we did need a vote. Mr. Millie, would you elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, so they said that we could certainly make the case that the initial agreement covered, but just to be safe, we should do an acceptance of this donation.
Could you give a quick overview of the donation for our new members?
So the Striders, I think this is fifth year, right? Yep, have been donating $10,000 towards the track because they have been able to utilize the track with their members running in the mornings and evenings once a week. Is it once or twice a week?
It might be like Tuesday mornings and Thursday afternoons or something like that.
Once a morning, once an evening. So low use, but the money has been very much appreciated and we've been putting it back into the track facility. So this is the fifth and final payment, our donation that they're making.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the donation from the Merrimack Valley Striders in the amount of $10,000.
And I'll second it.
Is there discussion?
Okay, just a big thank you to the Merrimack Valley Striders for their generosity.
For sure, yeah. Okay, ready to vote? Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, easy vote. And then we have minutes for March 23rd.
So I'll move to approve the minutes from March 23rd, 2023, as presented in the packet.
I'll second.
Is there discussion? Okay, we will vote to approve the minutes. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
I abstain from the vote.
Sure, Mr. Brown?
I abstain.
Great, and I will vote yes. Sorry, making notes. Okay, and then our favorite part of the evening, our student representative report. The floor is yours, Nora.
Hi, everyone. Good to see you again. For those of you I'm just meeting, my name is Nora Elkadiji. I'm a senior at North Andover High School. And firstly, congratulations to Mr. Brown and Ms. Koenig for being elected to the School Committee. Normally, we would have another representative, Ben Abbott, to greet you, but he couldn't make it, so it's just me today. To catch you up on what's happened at the high school, the 2023 Congressional Art Show was held recently and Nas did have a few winners. Congratulations to Senior Bookin Kennedy, whose self-portrait won the Best of All Schools, and seniors Colby Muse and Mariel Barrios, whose pieces won honorable mention. So congratulations. The boys volleyball team has gotten off to a strong start, having won their first match of the season against St. John's Prep 3-0. And their second match is today against Billerica, so good luck to them. And then another thing today, actually going on right now, is the Nas Band Concert featuring grades 6 through 12 in the gym at North Andover High School. And then coming up this Friday is the end of Quarter 3, so almost there. And then the North Andover Athletics Association is having their annual comedy show this Saturday in Lawrence. Tickets are available online and all of the proceeds will go towards North Andover Athletes. And then with prom coming up on the 28th of April, the Knights Locker formal wear appointments are now open for students who may not be able to afford formal wear. They can either get in touch with their guidance counselors or make an appointment online to access anything they may need. The third annual Anne Bright Street Poetry Contest submissions are now open. It is open to all grades, starting from 1, and there's also a category for adults and everything in between. They're accepting submissions from now until April 15th, to which then the finalists will advance. And then finally, there is a virtual autism workshop on April 11th, featuring speaker Jenna O'Donnell, who will speak to her personal lived experience with autism, as well as her sons. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's see if we have any questions. Mr. Hicks?
No questions tonight.
Okay, Mr. McDevitt?
No, great job.
Ms. Koenig?
No questions.
Mr. Brown?
No questions, great job.
Okay, and I don't have any either. Thank you again for an awesome job. You're welcome to stay, you're welcome to go do other things.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Dr. Gilligan, I think we are at the superintendent's report.
Terrific. We're going to start tonight with Ms. Marks with Greater Lawrence, our After Dark partnership. And I will let her explain what that is.
So obviously, you all have been here for the presentations about After Dark, so that's at collaboration with the Vocational Technical School in Lawrence. And I just want to give a thank you to our Director of Guidance, Mick Pinkston. She's done a really good job with this. So about a week and a half ago, there was a information session for students and for parents. And we have students who have already applied, and so it looks like it's going to be a go for some of our kids to be able to partake of that. So again, thank you to the School Committee for working with us on that. And again, Mick Pinkston has done a really outstanding job with us, so we're really excited to have this opportunity for some of our students. And once we know who goes, we can kind of let you know what paths, you know, we have students involved in over there. But this will be our first shot, so it's exciting. So and then the other piece I was going to mention was our Merrimack College partnership. So prior to COVID, we were looking at pursuing some early college opportunities for some of our high school students. And COVID came, obviously that went to the bottom of the list of things that we were working on. And some of the regulations and things around that have changed. So we are still looking at something with Northern Essex, but it's a little different than when we first started to pursue that. But Merrimack College actually has what's called an innovation grant, and so we are partnering with them for early college. And at the end of April, we have students going over for a tour, and we have five classes that are being offered as options for our students. Probably in the fall, we don't think it's going to happen in the summer, but that's still up in the air a little bit. But so there is one on social justice and ethics, and introduction to human development, foundations and principles of education, civic engagement and movements, and introduction to criminology. So there's some interesting classes that kids will have an option to pursue over there. So that's it. Thank you.
Sure, we'll just go around. Mr. Hicks?
No questions.
Mr. McDevitt?
I was just going to ask, is that like after school? Is that evening?
I'm not, I'm actually not certain what the timeframe is going to be yet, but once I know, I can let you know.
Okay, and do they get any college credit for that or North Andover credit?
I think, well, it typically counts as both. You get college credit and it counts as whatever, you know, the course requirements for high school as well.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Ms. Koenig?
And that's just, that's done like on a scholarship basis? So that's, is that like?
It's through a grant.
Okay.
Yep, so the innovations grant, yeah.
Great.
My question was back about the GLTS After Dark. Do we have a certain number of spots allocated that we could fill? Or how do we decide if we have more applicants than spots? Like what's the details behind that?
We don't, we don't know how many students are going to apply. It's possible there may be more applicants than spots. But we'll see what, you know, what shops they have space in and who, in terms of our students apply, and go from there. So we can let you know once that's all settled, but it's just in the beginning stages. We've had some students who've put in applications. We have other students who are still thinking about it.
I see.
Yeah.
So it's not, there's not a hard, fast, like limit. Well, there is a must be a limit, right? But multiple schools can participate, right?
It says 14 for us, the whole program with those schools.
Which I, yeah, which I think is for each of the programs, but I'll just hypothetically say like we might have two, Andover might have two, Lawrence might have three, and one of them, and then another one, our numbers could be three and somebody else could be two, so.
And it depends on the shops and, you know.
Right, what they have room space for.
Yes.
Yeah, of course. Is this the first year we've done this?
This will be the first year, yeah.
That's great.
So those presentations happened with the School Committee over the course of this year. And I think the MOU was just signed up maybe a month or so ago and submitted, so we're very excited.
I'm really pleased to see this personally. It's one of my personal goals is to find ways for students to do stuff like this and still go to our high school.
Yeah, we're excited.
It's a great opportunity.
This program was originally designed and developed for Lawrence Public Schools, for Lawrence High. And there were no students from Methuen or Andover going. So with the vocational funding that's out there, Andover had two students last year. And then I found out that Andover had two students. I said, we're going to get in. And so Methuen and North Andover this year are eligible. And it's our vocational district and it's a wonderful opportunity.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Marks, is Merrimack College, is that part of, you know, how the schedule kind of changed so that students have?
The high school schedule?
Yeah, the high school schedule.
Yeah.
Is that part, like, will that fall into that new schedule?
I believe so, yeah, that's a plan.
Great, thank you.
All right. You know, we won't play the video. I think it's two minutes and nine seconds, but it's the coolest thing. The first grade is in North Andover. One of the common things, if you haven't been in a first-classroom in a while, is they do weather every morning. You know, and that's something that they learn about in first grade in Massachusetts. So really cool meteorologist from WBZ, Jacob Wykoff, came out to Sergeant. And it sounds like, you know, Sergeant had made some efforts to get him out there. And they came out pretty quick because I found out after they were, that WBZ was out there. So it's a terrific video. It's cute. Principal Leahy does a great job. And so that was really awesome. The other cool thing is this weekend, I ran into Good Day Cafe and came across something that was, you know, I wouldn't have known about. It wasn't all that publicized, but I ran into Chief Dolan, the former fire chief. I didn't know Chief Dolan was a 1969 Johnson, North Andover High School grad. He signed up voluntarily for Vietnam and then he went back on two additional tours. So I ran into him and a couple veterans at the Good Day Cafe and found out that at North Andover High School last Wednesday, that they were honoring the fifth, last Wednesday was the 50th anniversary of the last combat troops evacuated from, leaving Vietnam in 1973. So although they pulled out in '75, the last combat troops came out in '73. And so at the North Andover High School, we have a Vietnam Memorial, which honors all the members of this community that lost their lives. And we had several North Andover residents, Vietnam veterans, lay a wreath in commemoration of this event. It was terrific. Dr. Millie was there, Mr. Jackson. And we already work pretty closely with Joe LeBlanc downtown, the Veterans Administrator for North Andover in Boxfield. And so we see this as a continued opportunity for our students to even be involved in the future because we do quite a bit with the veterans like Thompson School. So it was a very solemn event, nice event, and it was nice to recognize our Vietnam veterans who are getting older, very, well, yeah, they're getting older. So I think of them as pretty young and, you know, they're getting older and we're just a nice event. And it's on, Brian Fraser was there, so it's on cam. So that's that. And then just last but not least, I'd say, sent a note out today, this afternoon, to the community and to the faculty and staff. We have four finalists for the Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. Really appreciative of the wide range of people that volunteered to be on the search screening committee. And so we had 41 applications, you know, based on certification, degrees, experience. 19 went on to the committee and eight were selected to be interviewed. We interviewed eight last week. Dr. Millie chairs that committee. It was a great representation of, you know, a couple parents, staff, principals. And so we have four. And they will be in town next week. So there'll be an opportunity, each candidate will be in our schools for half a day. So there'll be a chance for the staff to do a drop-in, meet and greet, and provide feedback pre, before school starts. They'll have an opportunity to meet with our administrative team. They'll be doing a performance task with me, an interview with me and Lorraine, as well as meeting the curriculum team. And we'll also do some instructional rounds. So it's quite a packed day. And then on Wednesday of that week, so Tuesday and Wednesday we have them in. And then Wednesday evening, we'll hold a half an hour session, about 20 minutes with each candidate at the Rotunda at the library. So any community member, parent, anyone wants to go, they'll have a chance to hear a little bit about the candidate and then ask any questions they want. And they'll be able to provide feedback, which we'll then take in. So I'm pretty excited. The four finalists are Dr. Ann Clark. She is the principal, founding principal of the Boston Arts High School in Boston Public. Then we have Joseph Clark. He's the principal of Franklin School here in North Andover. Then we have Sarah O'Leary is the principal of the Proctor School in Topsfield. And the fourth candidate is Pam Lathrop. She is the principal of the High Plains Elementary in Andover, Mass. And had previously been principal about 15 years ago. She left North Andover. I can't believe it's been that long. She was the principal of the Franklin School for seven years. So really exciting and I'm thrilled and I was just terrific to have such a great pool.
Great, thank you. Okay, we will move right along to the Chair's report. So this is like the standard update or reminder that the Educator Hall of Fame nominations are due April 30th. So normally, the vice chair of the committee kind of organizes this evaluation process. There's a team. And the, once they've decided who the Educator Hall of Fame will be, they are notified and then they attend, they attend, well, first, my brain just shut off. I'm so sorry. Well, they don't go to opening day until the next year.
This year, well.
No, it's, so this year's Hall of Famer will go to opening day next school year in September.
Because they get inducted in October and then they speak.
And then October, the new Hall of Fame is, Hall of Famer is inducted at the tenure night for teachers in North Andover. I don't know why that was so hard to say. I'm sorry. Did I confuse you both?
No.
I think I'm with you.
Okay, good. So just wanted to update that those nominations are due on the 30th. And then whoever takes over as vice chair will continue to organize that. On Saturday, Mr. Hicks and I participated in the community chat at the library. I thought it was pretty good. We had one family show up. Was she a fourth grader?
Fourth grader, Kittredge.
At Kittredge. And she had some questions about how to include more fresh fruit and foods in the school lunches. And she had a little PowerPoint and it was really, it was, it was really well thought out and received. And I thought it was great. Am I missing something?
A parent expressed some wonderings around buses, formerly always being able to see the mechanical arms that would open up when kids would get off the bus, forcing kids to walk around and be in line of sight. But notice that the buses no longer have those mechanical arms equipped.
Right.
And had some questions about that.
And just some concerns about safety of kids, you know, leaving the buses when they're little and just busy streets and whatnot. So it was, I thought it was a really good conversation. We didn't have a huge turnout, but it was good, it was a good conversation with the family that was there. Anything else to add for that? We have not set another date for that. Mr. Hicks and I were quickly talking after, we're thinking maybe towards the end of the school year, we could do one more for this year. And we can have two members there. I've been at, we've had two so far. We did January and then this April 1st one. Ms. Picard accompanied me for the January. Mr. Hicks accompanied me for this one. It doesn't have to be me. If we have two other members that would like to participate, I'm happy to step aside and let two other people do it. Or we can have one other person and we can, we don't have to decide right now, I don't think. So.
Your proposed date, did you think of something?
No, we didn't get that far.
We were thinking early June-ish. And not to say that there would be an agenda because it's a community chat, but like the, it would be nice, it could be a great opportunity for members of the public to share ideas and thoughts and reflections about this school year to help inform, work for the. And not to say that there would be an agenda because it's a community chat, but like the, it would be nice, it could be a great opportunity for members of the public to share ideas and thoughts and reflections about this school year to help inform work for the following school year. Just as a way to shape the conversation, but of course, all feedback is always welcome and encouraged. And I'd be happy to attend again if.
So maybe we can check with the library and see what dates might be available.
Yeah, they've been pretty flexible. I mean, I, I haven't had a problem getting the, either of the dates. If I'm looking at a calendar real quick, June 3rd is the first weekend, but that's right after graduation. Or the 10th. So maybe the, maybe we could just put the 10th out and see who's, see what sticks, see who's available. And if anyone else is interested in doing that, feel free to just email later on and that works, I think. So the next item on the Chair's Report is the Subcommittee Assignment Review. So if you take a look at the current Subcommittee Liaison Appointments, we have quite a few appointments that need to be reappointed to replace Ms. Picard and Ms. Witzke. And so we can have some conversation about what each one looks like and what the time commitment is. We don't need to decide today. So. We have... So negotiations for the teachers, we have one available opening.
And we start with legal affairs.
Oh, I missed, hello, thank you. Legal affairs. Wow, it's been a long day. And it's only Tuesday. That's gonna throw me off all week.
Yeah.
Okay, legal affairs was Ms. Witzke, so we need that open. I don't have a lot of information about that because Holly was our representative, Mr. McDevitt, since you've been here the longest.
Thanks. That's, you know, if we've had to reach out to Town Council or other council, we've just had somebody who's kind of been the main point of contact. It's been Ms. Witzke in part because she's been a lawyer, which is convenient.
No pressure, no pressure.
No pressure.
Can I make a motion?
I don't think we voted on these, did we?
No, they're, they're kind of appointed.
We just appointed.
All in tolls, I forget. That has kind of been it.
If there is a need, I would be happy to step into that position.
It is specific to school committee because the school district and the superintendent often have to consult attorneys, but that's separate. This is only for school committee issues.
Right.
Okay. And then again, we'll decide this at the next meeting. We can all think about it. Just, we'll just gather some information. So we do need a teacher, a teacher's negotiation member to work with Mr. McDevitt. And as you know, Ms. Picard is gonna stay on and help that transition process, but we do need an official member. So that's open. That time commitment is pretty.
Significant.
Significant. Teaching assistance was Ms. Picard. I've stepped in for that role. I think that that's working so far.
One meeting down.
Uh, two.
Two.
Two meetings down, thank you. And then custodians, negotiation, we will also need someone. I don't know what the time commitment would be on those custodians.
Dr. Mealy, is that contract coming up?
Custodians are one year off from the others.
Okay.
Although we do need to add in, I made a note, I'll talk to Michelle about adding in negotiations, administrative assistants. Mr. Hicks is doing that.
Right.
I'd be happy to be the custodians, Ms. Petrowski.
Oh, great, okay.
Since they're not at the same time.
Smart. Okay, policy is myself and Mr. Hicks. If someone else wants it, I'm, I'm not, I'm, it's, I'm up for conversation on that.
Super fast, policy is state policy that comes out. We usually get updates and notifications, work with Town Council, sometimes there's language that like is just very minor changes or modifications, and so we kind of incorporate that. We have the ability to kind of make it a little bit unique to North Andover if it kind of, if our circumstances or our district kind of are a little bit different from the policy, but that's, those are published out. We actually have not done that. They just came out with a huge number of policy changes. But the list, the web server that they have it on has been down for about two weeks.
They got attacked.
They, it somehow, I wasn't gonna say they get cyberattacked or whatever. But, so we're waiting for kind of the draft documents of that. And then that'll be a conversation with Town Council to just kind of go through.
And we just, a couple of meetings ago, we completely updated our fiscal management policy based on a lot of that language with all the new references and such.
Yep, right.
And some of the policies, as Mr. McDevitt said, are applicable, but sometimes it's changes in the law and the law supersedes the policies.
Sure. So there's a question, when, when there's a policy change, does that just get voted on by the school committee? Okay, I just don't know if I had to go in for town or anything like that.
I can't think of anything that the Select Board have had to do. There's maybe some stuff with the school building committees, but that's not really policy.
This is the school committee's policies.
Right. So I just wanna make sure that.
This is for its policies.
Yeah. Fundraising, oh no, school build, I keep skipping ahead, I apologize. School building is Mr. Hicks.
And Mr. McDevitt.
With Kittredge.
With Kittredge.
Oh, right.
It's building specific.
Yep, thank you.
I should probably just break that out.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
These are last years, right?
Yep, they are. Fundraising, fundraising policy practices, Mr. McDevitt. And then the Hall of Fame is whoever is vice chair.
Got a question?
Yes.
For the negotiations subcommittees, do they, when do they meet? Do they meet during the business day? Do they meet in the evenings? What's the cadence and timeframes for that?
For which, for the teachers?
Teachers, yeah. Well, for all of them, actually.
They're all after school.
They're all after school, so they're during like the three, three to 5:00 PM-ish.
Correct.
Mutually agreed upon times.
Yeah. The teachers so far have been roughly 3:45 to about 5:45.
Right. And the administrative assistants, it looks like, we just scheduled a few. They start at 4:30.
Yeah. And, and how often are they, are those meetings?
Roughly. On average, a couple of weeks.
Yeah, every, well, for teachers, I think we've scheduled out three meetings into early May. But I can, I can share the dates with you guys, so you're aware of those.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. And then our liaisons. BR, what's BRC on how?
Building Respectful Communities.
Thank you.
So this is every other month, I think? Three times a year? Okay.
There may be another meeting, I'm trying to remember, but I know that there was the, because I've been involved with them three, it was three times they were meeting.
Okay.
I could, I'd be happy to do that, Ms. Petrowski.
Okay. Budget Communications is Chair and Vice Chair. Crest was Ms. Picard.
It's actually a big one.
This is a big one.
Yeah. So Crest is a collaborative that we have with a number of other communities for some students to just kind of, who may learn a little bit differently. And I think it's in, is it in Andover now?
Methuen. Oh, Andover now. It's been in Methuen forever.
It was in Methuen. It was right kind of on 28th, just kind of ass, right past the MSPCA there. And it just moved into Andover. And I feel like they meet like once a week, well, I'm, not once a week, uh, once a month. And it's, I mean, it's an amazing program. And we have always had basically a school committee member, but I think we can have the school committee member or the superintendent or a designee. Sorry, Stan, you, you might know, sorry.
Come on up, Stan.
You, you served on it for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Stanley, 43 Stone Cleve Road, just to clarify, when I got on the school committee early on, our Assistant Superintendent was the liaison to Crest. And it seemed like that was a waste, I mean, not a waste of their time, but not a good use of their time. And it was better that, you know, a school committee person could do that. So I volunteered to do that and I think over time, that seemed to be a useful thing. A lot of the representatives from other districts are in fact superintendents. But I think to have a school committee person there is good to give a different perspective, you know, I think it's important. The difference, I think, for, for having that kind of representation is, you know, we represent the money. I mean, we, you know, this, you pay the funds. You know, our caretakers of the funds, the superintendent's not so much, right? So it's good to have that perspective, I think, to have somebody there to go to those meetings. It is a little time consuming, but there's really, that's the only requirement, is attending the meeting once a month. There's no, typically no outside other activities that go on, no committees or anything that, that.
And I think they are daytime meetings, is that correct?
That's correct. That's, that's the only drawback for some people.
Thank you.
And we can get the schedule of the meetings, which may help.
Yep.
I can talk about SEEM.
Sure.
So SEEM is just our other special education collaborative, collaboratives put together with member districts to meet the needs of students who we can maybe not meet here. I am the representative to SEEM. That is all superintendents. I find SEEM very helpful because it's a different geographic region. We had to apply to get in. I had to interview with the Winchester Superintendent a couple of years ago. And so it's, you know, Winchester, Melrose, Woburn. So it's a different set. It's a good group and we have students at SEEM, we have students at Crest.
Thank you. All right, legislation, Legislative Liaison is me. North Andover Foundation for Education is Mr. McDevitt. PTO Presidents, which I think is pretty significant.
It's monthly?
Is it monthly?
We meet monthly during the morning. Once a month.
Is it a in-person meeting?
It is. Sometimes we zoom folks in.
Okay. So that would be open. The Health Advisory Council, that does not meet as frequently as we thought, right?
Okay, anyone free?
But I, I ran into Ms. Barzak the other day and, and she was confident that we'd be okay without a representative if we weren't able to get someone to see. And then the CPAC. I went to their meeting last night and as we were in the meeting, I was sort of thinking that this one might be, it might be beneficial to both the CPAC and the school committee to rotate this one. Because I think it would help us all to get to know each other better and to see what their meetings are like and for them to get to know us a little bit better. And I think they are monthly and they were virtual, they were in-person at one point, but I think they've gone back to being virtual. So we can, we can have a conversation about that. In the past, it was just one person. You can have two members there. I know.
Like kind of tandem that.
Yeah. But I just, you know, I just thought, you know, if we know ahead of time when the meetings are and we just, you know, plan them out, then everybody has an opportunity to build that relationship and keep communication going between, and everybody's, you know, more comfortable. You're not gonna be comfortable to have a conversation with someone if you don't see them on a regular basis. Not that once a month rotated is a lot, but it's more than we've had, so.
I think that's a good idea, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I like that too.
I like that as well.
I like that too.
Well, I mean, obviously in the campaign, we heard a lot about that, so I think it's appropriate.
I think, I think it would help build the relationship between the two boards and relation, uh, communities, so.
That's great.
Okay, all right, so maybe we can.
Do we know the date of their next meeting?
May 6th, I think it is.
And then maybe we can ask for a list, if, I don't know if they would have next year's dates set yet.
No.
Sure. We can.
But if it's monthly, we can just assign per month.
It usually, well, well, I shouldn't say that, so it'll be moved forward, but this year it was first Monday of every month.
And they usually carry on something like that, something along those lines.
Can you just speak into the microphone?
Oh, yeah, you gotta use the mic. I'm, I'm sorry, I saw him waving.
They are typically the first Monday of the month.
But yeah, I mean, and then if we need to switch things out as our schedules are, you know, everybody's busy and whatnot, so. Okay, and then we have our Town Diversity Committee, which is Mr. Hicks. So I know that's a lot. If you have questions, feel free to ask them now. Or, you know, send an email, reach out.
So these are appointed by, by you?
Correct.
By the Chair?
Yep.
Okay, and so if we're interested, we should just email you directly?
Sure, yes.
Rigorous application process.
Yes. Yes, I'm gonna send out a Google form.
Do I have to do a cartwheel or?
Yes.
First email in gets the.
Who gets there first, right? Okay, any questions? All right.
But I'm sorry, Andrew, you're gonna, you're gonna email around the dates that are already set up for.
For the, the teacher negotiation. I, I have them on my phone. I, it would just, it would be weird to pull them up because I'd have to stumble through.
Yeah, okay.
The calendars, so.
Please do when you get a chance.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'll email them out and find everyone.
Okay.
Okay, and then the last item on the Chair's Report is also something we are not going to decide tonight, but wanted to have some discussion around the vice chair vacancy. Open floor.
So I'll just kind of quickly say, we reorganize, I can't speak, reorganize the committee typically in our June meeting. And that's the whole board, so there's the Chair, the Vice Chair, and then Joe, right now, is the Clerk who's responsible for minutes for the executive sessions only. So whoever is kind of vice chair would really be vice chair for about two months or so. And that's just because Holly was, was vice chair.
Great, thank you for clarifying. So we don't need to make that decision now, but if there's questions, we can have a conversation, have a discussion.
Yeah, so when it's reappointments in June, how is that typically decided among?
There is a policy that we have on BRB that outlines the process. The reorg portion of the, the reorganization meeting is headed by the ranking member of the committee, Mr. McDevitt, who runs the process for selecting the new Chair. And then once that is completed, the new Chair then runs the process for Vice Chair and Clerk in order.
And I think to reorg for our Vice Chair, you would also do that same process.
Yeah. Just, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's the way the policy is.
Sure, we'll follow policy.
Pretty sure it's BRB.
Okay, so that, that outlines how, how the selections are made or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And the Vice Chair and the Chair actually set the agenda.
Right.
So the agenda has to be posted 48 hours prior to the meeting. And usually if we have, for example, a Thursday meeting, the agenda meeting is on Monday at some point. That way it is Monday or Tuesday.
It's been Tuesday.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, it could be Monday.
It could be Monday.
Agenda has to be posted.
It can be Tuesday.
All town committees are that way. It has to be posted 48 hours.
Yeah, so just.
Not counting weekends.
Yeah, so, you know, we, Monday, Tuesday typically is when a mutually agreed upon time kind of is there. I helped set the agenda this week. I zoomed in. Everyone else was kind of in the room, which, which was fine. And we, we met for, I don't know, probably 30, 40 minutes or so.
Yeah.
And then we usually have a draft, but then it's, you know, do we need to move anything? Do we need any documents? Do we need to bring somebody in? And if we're gonna bring somebody in, then it's kind of making sure, usually we're, we've got, I don't wanna say sample agendas, but there are certain things that have to happen at certain places. Like there's certain things we have to vote on, for example, like school choice.
June 1st with a public hearing.
Right, and so, you know, like we have placeholders for those type of things, so they kind of come out. And then, you know, we add things in as, as they kind of come up. So.
Are there questions, thoughts?
So if we're interested, do we express that somehow or like, or I go read the policy, I guess, but that would explain.
Yeah, I mean, we're just kind of having a conversation about it now.
The structure is you get, so someone will nominate and then there's a second.
Right.
And then we discuss and vote.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm just being completely frank, I, as a new Chair... Yeah, I mean, if I'm just being completely frank, I, as a new chair, would probably feel more confident and comfortable with someone with experience. But I'm also open to working with anybody.
Right, this for two months anyway.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah.
The pay is awesome.
You're really selling it, Andrew.
Mr. McDevitt, I'm impressed that you know that the school choice hearing is June first, that's pretty good.
Well, he's, he's been on the committee for eighty-five years, so.
He surpassed Mr. Limpert, I think.
That's right. Okay, so let's move on to old business. We have a second read and vote for revolving accounts for FY twenty-four.
So for the benefit of the new members, we approve an operating budget each year and we approve the revolving account budgets. And the main ones include community programs and food services, which are, in effect, enterprise funds. They completely sustain themselves and there's nothing coming out of the operating budget for those. Whereas you also have athletics and transportation, which are kind of a mix, where there are fees associated that come into a revolving account and go towards expenses, but then the operating budget also covers expenses for those. And what we request for a budget are what we've spent in the past few years in anticipate spending in the following year and the revenues we anticipate generating. Just so you understand, whatever you guys approve, we can only spend up to that amount. But we're even limited by what comes in. So we can't spend any more than the money that comes in, even if we've budgeted more. So that dictates what we can spend. If for some reason we got more money in, in a particular year, and we needed to increase that, we would come back to the school committee to increase the budget.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so I think.
A question about this, though?
Do we need a motion?
Move.
Don't, it's okay.
And then discuss.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the proposed revolving budget, revolving budget accounts for fiscal year twenty, fiscal year twenty-four as presented in the packet.
I'll second.
Sorry.
Okay, is there discussion?
There is. So I was looking at this earlier. In some cases, the expenses don't match the revenue, for example, in transportation, right? The expenses shown here, and I'm losing track of the column, it's a, for FY twenty-three, so FY twenty-three is still happening, right? That's.
Correct.
Yeah. So does, is, do I interpret that expenses as expenses to date or anticipated for the whole year?
That's projected.
Projected.
For the year.
Okay.
Yep. And we don't exactly, we're not gonna budget exactly to the amount because we probably won't collect three hundred and fifty-six thousand. Over the years, we've seen a decrease in our revenue for a lot of our revolving accounts because of free and reduced and the increase in free and reduced. So we would anticipate both numbers being lower, the, the revenue will probably be lower than three fifty-six. And obviously the expenses will be what we collect.
What we collect or what we, you mean, pay out? Expenses would be paid out, right?
But the revenue will be.
Well.
The revenue will be what we collect.
Right, and the expenses will be based on what we collect, it will be no more than what we.
Oh, I see, so there's a, that's the limit you refer to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, got it. Okay. And that would be true in every, in every one of these categories?
Exactly.
Okay, I got you.
Dr. Merely, with the school lunch, I feel like I asked this question and I don't remember, so I do apologize. If there, this is, the reimbursements are from the federal and the state governments. If they were to change, what impact would, right now, we have extra money from the state for free and reduced lunch for everybody. If they do not include that in the budget, the state budget for next year, would, how would that impact our revolving accounts at all?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. So basically what would happen is this, you would see the lunch and breakfast receipts, so paid meals would go up. Obviously, the reimbursements would go down and the expenses would go down because we'd be delivering less meals. We have a high percentage of participation because of the free meal program, which is great, we love it. But that's what would happen, that's what you would see.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Just so you know, the state just passed the supplemental budget, I think the governor signed it, which will ensure free meals, you know, through, from April on through the end of this year. So a lot of the press releases said it was for the year, but it didn't specify whether that was, you know, like December thirty-first or next year. You know, we, so that only goes to the end of the year, thank you. I called Janice Phillips this week after I didn't get representative, former representative Minicucci on the first call because there was a lot of articles about it and people were asking about it. And that's what I thought, but, you know, I think there's a proposal for that to go forward next year for the budget that passed sometime in July or maybe August.
And there's a strong push and a lot of support for that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Huge.
Including this committee.
Yes.
That's right, we have a letter. Okay. Are we ready to vote? Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Five oh. And moving on to new business, we have a first read and a request to suspend the rules and vote for the annual town meeting warrant article.
This request comes annually. The town manager asked if the school committee would like to provide a recommendation to be included in the town warrant for town meeting article two. And article two gives the superintendent and the town manager the ability to solicit and award contracts, except personnel contracts for the, for terms exceeding three years, including any renewal, extension, or option provided in each instance. We do this every year and this goes in front of the town every year, a town meeting.
So question, point of order, you said we have to suspend the rules, what does that mean?
Because we normally do two, two readings, a first reading and a second reading, and then we vote. But this is only the first reading, but because of the time constraint.
With town meeting coming up?
Yeah.
To print the budget packet. So that when the budget packet is printed, it will say, "School Committee Recommendation, Favorable Action."
If we wait till our next meeting.
Or unfavorable.
It would be too late.
It would be blank.
Or, yeah, I think it says like, "To be announced at meeting."
You can do it on the floor, so like the select board has voted for favorable action. They had this at a meeting, but we couldn't, we couldn't get this earlier. This is as early as we typically get it, and then it has to go to print.
Okay. So with the rules we're suspending are our rules.
Our rules, so that we can vote on it tonight without a second read.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Got it, okay.
So is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, I move that we suspend the rules to authorize. Do I have to do the whole motion to accept or just to suspend the rules?
I think just to suspend the rules.
I move that we suspend the rules.
I was a little nervous there for a second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, and discussion about suspending the rules?
We already had.
Okay, so we're just voting to suspend the rules. Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
No.
Okay. Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so we are four, two, one. Okay. And now, is there a motion to approve?
I, I move that we
Recommend favorable.
Recommend, recommend favorable action for article two of the upcoming town meeting warrant.
I'll second.
Great, is there discussion?
So just a question, you're saying that we have, this has to be done every year?
Yes.
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 Town vote, town? Town meeting votes on it every year.
So the town charter only allows us enter into contracts for three years?
Maximum.
Maximum. Unless the town charter is changed, which it has not been, we do this so that when we do something like a transportation contract, we negotiate a three-year with an option for a four and a, fourth and a fifth, so that we have a little bit of a better bargaining opportunity.
Yeah, okay. I remember hearing about that a few meetings ago, right? Okay, yep. So that's the reason. Okay.
So we're voting to
Recommend favorable action at town meetings.
Like, give? No, recommend favorable action by the school committee.
The actual vote on whether or not this passes or not is town meeting. And it is whoever shows up and is in the room.
Right.
So whether or not we vote favorable or unfavorable, it's town meeting's decision.
Decision, right, understood, they're looking for our opinion. I guess my last question is, this is only good, valid for, for one year?
One year.
Because it doesn't say that. How do we?
It's mass general law.
Oh, it's mass, under mass general law?
Yep.
Okay. Chapter thirty-B, section twelve.
Dr. Merely's a chapter thirty-B expert in procurement.
Okay, I got it, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay, so, ready to vote, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Moving right along, we are on to public comment. Is there public comment?
Three things. First is, I wanted to add to what Dr. Gilligan said about the rededication of the Vietnam Memorial at the high school. They're also going to be adding, the veterans' group is going to be adding pavers that have the names of every North Andover resident that served in Vietnam, five hundred and fifty people are going to be added as a sort of a patio in front of that memorial, so I think this could be a really nice touch. I don't know if any of you have been to the library and seen the wonderful work that some of our elementary school students have done, it's just great. Theme is food or something, I, I wasn't quite clear on that, what.
So it's North Andover Reads, and it was Food and Family.
Food and Family.
We had an author, Raul the Third, his book was "Vamous, Let's Eat." And so we have a few things you'll see in the hallway here. You see, down by the front door, you'll see food trucks and menus. And then, it's actually middle school too, so on some of the file cabinets, you see placemats that the middle school students did. And then the actual food was done by some of our elementary students. And if you go to the library, you'll see additional, kind of like the, it's out of tissue paper, brightly colored tissue paper, the cut-up, cut paper designs, there's some of those. And lots more food trucks, the food trucks are a riot.
It's just great.
Names on the food trucks and some of the menus. So it's been, it was a really nice collaboration between our elementary art, art teachers and our middle school art teachers and part of the whole North Andover Reads piece with the community, so. And the art, the art teachers, it's been a couple of years that they've been involved. A few years ago, we had music involved because we did a celebration, a hundredth anniversary of Armistice Day. So we had some music as well and participated in the Veterans Day Parade and things like that, so. It's really a fun activity, but yeah, it's beautiful.
It was really great, yeah, and it's wonderful to have the opportunity to show it at the library, so.
Yes.
You know, more of the community can get in to see it, so that was a really nice thing. And then I want to add my congratulations to Ms. Koenig and Mr. Brown for joining the school committee. They worked hard, but now the work begins, so this is when the fun starts, so, welcome. Thank you for everything you've done so far and what you'll be doing.
Thank you.
Of course.
I'm remiss in not mentioning earlier, during the Vietnam Memorial, I didn't mention David Rand. David is ninety-two, ninety-three now. He was instrumental, he's a retired police officer, instrumental, him and his son, doing a lot of the work in construction of the original Vietnam Memorial and a renovation. So his name always comes up with it, and he is a wealth of knowledge, but David Rand was involved in that, I just felt I had to say it.
Thank you. Okay, and so is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
I'll second.
All right.
We're not hungry, ready.
Is there discussion? Okay, Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. McDevitt?
Yes.
Ms. Koenig?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.